All right, as we're about ready to start the school board meeting, I'll remind everybody that the school board meeting is recorded. The microphones are in the ceiling, so anything you say does get recorded. So just want to make sure you're mindful of that and we get ready to go. Neil, I will, it's almost six thirty. And it is now, so I'll hand that meeting over to you.
Good evening. This is the meeting of the Rochester School Board. I'm the Vice President, Neil Turner. And at this point in time, we will go to our roll call. What we do first, actually, first, it's a roll call. I get it. Okay. Actually, time, everyone. Gladly.
The United States of America. Republic of British States.
One nation, under God. Liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone who made it here this evening. We have Thomas Truck is, he is at work, so he is excused this evening. Grant?
Here.
Suzie?
Here.
Michael?
Present.
And me, Neil Turner, I'm present also. All right. Now, we will move on to our public comments for items that are on our agenda. Do we have anyone in the hall?
No.
Nope. There's no one in the hall. Do we have anyone online? Any comments?
We, we do have one person, but I'm guessing they are good.
Okay, sounds good. All right. And with that, we will move on to number four, our consent agenda tonight. With that, do you have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Will move. And do we have a second?
Second. I'll second.
Either way.
We're both seconding.
All right.
Good.
All right. Do we have any discussion?
Just those Sue Holmes is on that list. That's a long person, right?
She has officially announced she's retiring.
Yeah.
Going to miss her.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? Consent agenda. Next, we're going to move on to our reports. We have our student reps today.
All right, so we have quite a few things on the agenda. First up is Track. They just got done with their fundraiser. They made about six thousand to seven thousand dollars in their fundraiser. A few of you guys supported it. Thank you. Um, we also just had our first meet on Saturday and we had multiple runners and a relay make it on the podium, which is pretty cool.
I'll start my session off by actually introducing myself because I'm obviously not Tristan Nelson. Um, I know everybody in this room about you all, but I'm Jalen. I'm our ASAP Vice President. And the next thing we have is that boys soccer is in the midst of raising money, selling cookies, and they've also been on a winning streak. They're three and one in league and three and two overall, and they had a turnout over forty-seven boys. And did you guys see how they kicked Chief LaShaw? That was pretty cool. I'm proud of them.
Uh, next is baseball. Uh, they're starting a fundraiser in about a week and they had one again, uh, one win against the Charlie beating them twelve to two, which is really good.
Fast pitch is one and O in league and they beat tonight out twenty to four. Since it's so early in the season, um, they've had a lot of games getting rained out, but baseball and fast pitch has had a pretty decent turnout for players and I'm excited to see how they go.
Girls golf hasn't improved both in their two matches. Miss Nonrel is super proud of her team's progression throughout the season.
And then something more school-wide is that Monday during CSR is the grand opening of the student store. Um, Miss Severino's business class and FBLA run it. They've worked very, very hard on it. So CSR is from nine forty to ten fifteen. If you'd like to come see it open, come support our students. They do take cash only, so keep that in mind.
That's all prices.
Yeah. That's all we got? Questions, thoughts, concerns?
Questions, board members?
Thank you.
They may take us something before this thing is over, but we're going to try to.
Okay, I've got.
Right. Well, thank you, ladies. All right. At this point in time, we're going to move on to our facilities report. Red.
Okay. What's happening in facilities? Well, um, studios face a lot of challenges with, um, keeping up with schools with staffing and the, all the, the three Ps, as we call it, and stuff like that. Cleaning, it's, it's been a big challenge. Um, you know, we, we cut the custodial staff back some, so it's just, they're, they're doing everything they can to try to keep things going. Um, but it's, it's a huge challenge that we, every week we approach it different, see how we can make it best facilitate the schools. We're making good progress on the JV fast pitch field. Um, I think there's some pictures. We, we've got, we're in the process of getting the dugouts all put up and everything, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks we'll be putting some paint on those, so. Now the girls are excited. They practiced out there tonight, so. Um, be nice to have that, that field set up somewhere down the road. Uh, it's going to come that we're going to need to put an outfield fence somewhere, temporary or permanent, so. Keep that in the sack of your head.
Trees?
Yeah, and along with that is the, um, uh, um, there's sixteen of them old trees. They're at the end of life, is what they call it. They're very large, very big trees with branches, probably, you know, eight inches across. And as baseball comes, we have that field out there. People are going to want to sit in the shade and so it's a safety concern. So I'm getting quotes right now on having somebody come in and take those out. Um, I'm trying to find the best benefit for the school. Let's see if we can get some money back for the timber or we can just get somebody to saw up the timber or what we can do or firewood even, you know. Um, so, uh, I've got three different people that have been giving me quotes, so we'll see where that progresses. Um, but hopefully that'll be happening relatively soon, so. Water system updates. Um, we're making good progress on our maintenance of the water system. We're working on the, the calcite tanks, uh, the reservoir itself. We're doing some more periodic flushes of the system just so that we make sure that it stays, everything's flowing good hydrants. We've got a regular system, bunch of hydrants, everything now, so. Um, I feel good about what's happening there. So it's still an old system. We're still struggling with it, but we're making progress on getting it dialed in, so. Where the state is requiring us to do more water samples now, so that's becoming a, quite a challenge. We're doing, have to do water samples even for like nitrates for which is provided by Rochester Water. But now they're wanting us at a school to send people through samples there. They want us to do samples. We just did PFOS samples. They want us to do more updated PFOS, PFOS samples on a more annual basis. And PFOS samples are quite expensive to do. It's a very time-consuming process. It, 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 it taxes our maintenance department and what it takes to make these things happen. And they're, they're very detailed, very critical. PFOS is anything that comes from clothes, you gotta wear certain clothes, certain no cologne, certain things you gotta do when you take the samples. It's very, very, it's very processed, yeah. So you can't wear a fleece vest. You can't, you know, wear a shirt that is brand new within five washings and all kinds of stuff. Oh, yeah, it's very, it's, 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 um, it's very time-consuming. I just had to do them last year and I'd hope that this organization would have accepted them, but like they know we got to do them again, so we have to do them every year, so. Hopefully they, they figure out, it, it's a new process that they're trying to figure out what, what to do right now. They don't really have, even if you get your PFOS samples tested, challenging, that's what's called challenging, that there's something there, they don't even have a process for what you can do to fix it yet. It's all so new. So PFOS comes from like if you have Teflon coated pans, all that stuff, when you wash them and they look down to the drain into the groundwater. So it's things that isn't necessarily we're doing. It could just be in our water table, so. Rochester High School has, uh, prevented more challenges as it always does. Our roof, we have some pictures of that.
We have that. Do you want to get dry fire system?
Uh, oh, yeah. Yeah, it's okay. I can do that. We've been working on the, uh, dry fire system at the high school. We've had more pipes that have corroded, fractured. Um, the good news is we're getting so good at shutting that system down that pioneers, night, or night fliers involvement has been getting more minimal, so. And, you know, if they come out, it costs us a thousand dollars, so we've been getting better at, um, shutting the system down and avoiding flooding the pipes and staying dialed in on it so that we can catch it before we get a, a water leak, so. However, we, we just spent another four thousand dollars working on that. It, it's, it's just an, an ongoing thing that is going to happen. It could happen next week or it could happen six months from now again. You know, there's, it's just the challenges of that school. So I, while back I give Jennifer a second, like in her office, if you're in there having a conversation, just look at it. It just, it tells the whole story. I mean, it's just how bad the pipes are.
I'll go grab it while you're talking.
Yeah.
Show them.
Yeah. But the good news is the main departments, the maintenance department is, is dialed in pretty good on what, what needs to happen over there. And I mean, the ma, the high school is the only school that I personally visit every single morning. Because you never know what is going to happen. You know, I mean, all the others, I, I catch through the day, but the high school is always a school every morning is the perfect place I go. Just because you just, you never know what you're going to find in there. So a, along with that, we have leaks in the, uh, the roof is leaking in many spots in the high school.
I, I could, we do have pictures.
Yeah, and then we have this thing, swings in there too.
Swing first.
Okay, so let's go to the, this is the swing that we put in at the middle school. Uh, outside of the Fed Department, we put in, uh, a swing set in a fenced area. Um, these pictures kind of speak for themselves on what, how the kids feel about it. They just, it really lights them up. I, I just got these sent to me today by a, a teacher over there. And it, it's a slow process getting it in because you know you have work on the weather and everything, but it's all completed now. This was provided by, um, and with the Shalas tribe. So you get a chance to be out behind the middle school, check it out. It's a nice little, nice little area. Think they probably have plans someday for putting some kind of a table or something in there for they could have some outside time in sunshine.
Now.
Now the bad news.
Yeah.
This is the, the roof at the high school. This is, every year that it, when the weather changes and it freezes, you could see that that roof is deteriorating every year. That every place where there's a, a, a four by sheet, there's clips that hold them down and nails that hold them down, of course. And when it freezes, the cross buckles those. Every year until this year, they've laid back down and we've gotten by. But this year, when they buckled up, they stayed up. They just, it, it's just wore out. There's water running in. This is the valley over here. The picture on the left is the valley that runs down and that, all that water that runs down that thing is ending up in the vault in the high school and the office.
Which you picture.
Yeah, we have a reverse umbrella in there that, that I've, I purchased many of them. And it collects and runs into a hollows, which goes into a bucket, which gets changed weekly or daily, depends on what the rain is. Yeah. That's the, that's the vault where the safe and everything is at the high school. We got another one in room three oh three today, this morning, that even though it hasn't rained yesterday, but it just slowly made its way through the roof and down the rafters and you can see, the picture on left, it, it's just like a snake that s's up. Um, there's ones where the one in the middle goes, you know, vertically. There's other pictures where it literally goes horizontally, which the roof guy is suspected some, so many of them sheets have settled and it has buckled the three tab like this. We're in year nineteen of a fifteen-year roof on that school, so. If it was a composite roof, we wouldn't be having these pictures right now, but it's a, a three tab was when it was installed, so.
Ed, is there a point where anybody tells us we have to replace it?
Oh, we have, we, we're at the point now that we have to replace it.
Yeah, we need to replace it because it's leaking and so forth, but is there an external group that would look at this and say you have to?
No, I, I am, I am on the list for, um, air quality samples for, um, our schools. So if they come in and they find that there's air quality issues and, you know, this could, could lead to this. But yeah, no, we're at a point, we, we have to do something, you know, because it's, it's, it's just everywhere. There's no fixing. I mean, there's, those are, those are three of like fifteen pitchers. I mean, I could trade pitchers all night long. It, it should everywhere, I mean. If we have one, rise up on the roof with the roofers, you've got to be careful where you walk, you know. They estimated that there's probably a hundred, uh, sheets of sheet that you'd have to replace.
Have we had a recent estimate?
I had, I've had people come out and give, one company has come out, you know, you're probably looking at seven, eight hundred thousand dollars.
And you're working on getting more.
Yeah, I have more. Yeah, I'm, I'm, we're going to get another quote and whatnot.
And realistically, that's just based on what they can see.
That's just what they can see. Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, despite them walking across it, they're saying they're, they're thinking a hundred sheets, you know, and yeah, it's, it's just.
A hundred fifty could be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, and, and, and sub, subframe, you just, you don't know, you know, I mean, like that roof that's going in the vault, it comes from the very top. So when you drive in high school, you see the very pitch. It's, it could come from the, from there all the way down to the bottom where it's coming in. It's literally running down an IB, a steel IB. Yeah, so where is it coming in? I mean, and what's getting soaked and what's getting, you know, so.
Yeah.
Year nineteen of a fifteen year. So we've already outlived its life cycle, so it needs to be replaced.
It does.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
Plan was to replace with your bomb.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of money.
And now we're stuck.
Yeah.
We have to maintain it or add this good money after bad kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, 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 you know, you have a new roof on a still very poor building.
I didn't think it was that long ago that it was replaced. The, the gym was replaced like nineteen years ago. The building's been fifteen.
So there's no way of dividing it up into sections and doing certain sections?
I mean, the problem is, is once you tear into it, it, there's just the sheathing is the, is the concern, you know, I mean. My ass was right, we had kind of a coating that we could try to do to even prevent, like the valleys are, are the worst. There's just, there's nothing. It's, when it comes down to those valleys, it's going two tabs back, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's just no way to.
I've got a metal roof.
It's going, you know, three ta, three tabs over. They're just, I mean, we were up there and lifted them and they're wet and half of them aren't even here down. They're just.
Would it be more expensive to put a metal roof on?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure, but we'd have to have the, the structure still. You'd still be doing sheathing and stuff like that.
Right.
That roof is so big.
It's so big.
It's so big for metal roof that I didn't, I, you know, the runs that they would have to make.
Yeah, I know.
Now, there's, there's tons of different things that they're doing now. I mean, I watched, I checked out some the other day. There was actual tiles they put in there, solar tiles. That would look like a great idea, you know.
What?
Quite a solar tiles. They're tiles about this nice of this podium. They just click and lock, click and lock. And nice, so you kind of get the benefit of like a tile roof, but then you have solar, but great, pretty expensive.
Are there any grant funds available for this type of roofing that we're needing to replace? If we can apply.
Like for a bridge repair, right?
Yes.
We have.
We didn't put the roof on that one at that point because we didn't know the roof was in the shape it was at that point. Yeah.
Definitely something that's going to have to be repaired.
What's that? Yeah, so. But we don't know. We won't do it until a year.
Okay. And the, what's called the calcid tanks?
Calcite tanks.
Calcite tanks. And, and they're working correctly now?
We're still servicing. We're still servicing.
Yeah. Okay, truly good.
I have, I have, I have, I have strong hopes that we're moving in the right direction. So, yeah, we're, um, we have, um, we're making good progress.
And the, uh, testing you were talking about, is that required by the state or the county?
State.
State, the state requires.
It's actually, it's in the federal PFOS as well, so.
Okay. And so how much does that cost us to have these things tested regularly?
Costs, um, they haven't given us a cost yet. I applied for the permits for, to get it done for free. The last time I had it done, I applied and I got it, the testing and everything done for free. Low like Rochester Water said it costs four thousand, around four thousand dollars. So if we don't get it for free, that's what we can be looking for.
And they're wanting this done a couple of times a year?
Yeah, they want us to do, I just did it all in October, November, or September, October. Both wellheads, and now they want me to do SO one, um, in April. That's what we done between April and June, and then next year they want me to do SO two between April and June. And I called and said, look, I just literally six months ago I submitted these, you know. This is the new regulations for the W G M, so what we have to do.
And all school districts are required to do this?
Well, I don't know about that. I just know that they're making us do it. You know, they, they, how do they go about like what Rod loaded his two years ago and they're making him redo on what the water system he manages. Rochester Water.
Most school districts don't have their own water system. And that is something Ed and I are, um, going to be talking with Thurston County to see what it would take to get us hooked up to the Grand Mount water system. This is just getting to be way too much. I mean, it was, it's been too much for a long time, but it's not getting better. It's getting worse.
Generally, these continual unfunded mandates that we are required to take care of that, continuing to constrict what we have for our kids.
Yeah, I think PFOS is brand new, so they're all going out, so it's, it's going to do nothing to ramp up, I'm sure. Um, you know. And where does it go? I, I can't answer that.
Well, I appreciate everything you're doing. Board members, any other questions? Nope. Right. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate the update.
Down low. One W twelves.
Thank you.
Next, we have our business updates. Hi, Jill.
How? How are you?
We're doing all right.
Doing all right. Um, so for our March, uh, student FTE, we're at two thousand and seven, so we are still holding three students above what we budgeted, which is great news. Um, we have seventy-six running start participants and fifteen are running, thirty-five are running start only. Um, heart FTE is up to thirty-four point three five. Uh, special education count of three hundred and sixty-four and six students eligible, eligible to be counted in the dropout reengagement program. And then the, the visual of that student FTE, um, it's the red line with the arrow pointing to it, so we are, we are heading in kind of the wrong direction, but there's some hope we can study out. Um, at the end of February for financials, our ending fund balance, um, was two, two million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And now that our minimum fund balance policy is between eight and eleven percent, um, we would expect to have three million, twenty-seven, four hundred um, in our unrestricted fund balance and for unrestricted, we have one point six. So, um, it's better than nothing, but we still have some work to do.
No question.
Yes.
The, the roof that we just heard about, if we don't, we're not successful in getting some emergency funds granted to us, would that possibly come out of the capital or would that come out?
An entire replacement extends the useful life of the building, so it can be shut off also. Yep. Um, it's for budget statistics, February is fifty percent, um, of the fiscal year complete. Our revenues are at forty-eight and our expenditure is at forty-two. So pretty close to on track. Um, speaking of capital projects, our balance is three point six million, so hopefully we would have enough to, to use those funds if we needed to. Debt service at eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, ASB at six hundred and eleven thousand, and transportation vehicle at two hundred and fifty-three thousand. Any questions?
I have none, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Next is our superintendent report.
Hey, I have a few things for you this week, not too many, but first just to look back on reading across America the week. We had, um, both RPS and GMS had all types of celebrations going on all week with kids doing a lot of reading and reading activities. Um, they had hat day, they had pajama day, they had all kinds of different dress up days and the kids really, kids and staff and staff extending beyond the buildings. Um, because I know with staff from here who went out and had a lot of fun with kids doing some reading and just being a part of the week, it's a good time. The next is just a, a look back at future chef competition. Uh, Michael was able to join us for, uh, as one of the judges for that and you might want to add a few things, but it was, um, a really good event. Want to share anything now or do you want me to just keep going?
Um, just the enthusiasm of the kids and their families really coming out to watch it.
Yeah.
And I didn't have to cook that night.
We had eight kids that, um, were, that actually cooked for us. You can see them there in the bottom right-hand corner. Um, they cooked things such as fish tacos with peach salsa and minestrone soup and meatballs with carrots, brown sugar sauce. And there was Cookie Monster cookies and a jerk cake with gummy bears. Um, there was all kinds of things and they, they really tasted very, very good. Um, Brant Tatum, I believe is that way, is his name?
Oh, excellent.
Okay, um, he made German rumpza. And that's him up in the top right-hand corner. It was his grandmother's recipe and it was really good. It's a very good, uh, kind of like a pizza pocket, but German. And, um, yeah, and we had rather large portions of everything. So like Michael said, you go home and you are not, um, hungry at all, but it was a really nice event. Kids did a great job. This took place on Monday and Wednesday. It was a natural disaster showcase and the fourth grade team at Grand Mount um, had their kids after doing some reading in our new reading curriculum. Um, they were reading stories about different natural disasters and then the kids did some more exploration, came up with projects um, or determine what they wanted their project to be on and they presented, um, and researched more in-depth information about a natural disaster. So we saw things that kids had done on droughts. We saw them on volcanoes. We saw them on, talk about floods. The young man on the left there, his name's Tucker, and he talked us about tornadoes and that was just today and he was so excited because of all days, he's talking about to make tor, tornadoes and, you know, in the news, we might have a tornado, so.
They were really excited about that on Monday. I helped out with that.
Did you?
And this one kid, he comes up and he says, so you think my diagram's going to come true? That was, he had, he was on the spinny. Oh, he had a battery pack and he pressed on it and the tornado spun around in his diorama, diorama. And I was like, yeah, I think it's going to look just like.
Yeah, it was a very neat activity for the kids and they, I did a really nice job with their presentations and did a really good job putting all their research together to share it with everybody, so. It's a fun day. Um, we are in the middle of trying to find a replacement for Mr. Moss, um, during his eighteen years in the district. Um, we are in the process now of doing interviews. We, um, had thirty-seven applicants. It was a strong pool. Um, we have just completed the first round where we asked a number of applicants to send in a video interview where they answered some questions on a video and we reviewed that to determine who we wanted to have come in and do in-person interviews. Um, we have a list of people we're going to be calling and contacting to have them come in on Monday. And on Monday they will come in and similar to the Grand Mount procedure, they'll, or process, um, they'll come in, they'll meet with staff, they'll meet and do a traditional interview. They'll do a classroom observation. They'll meet with students and have a student tour of the building and there'll be a parent forum in the afternoon or evening. So that all takes place on Monday. Uh, Jalen mentioned, I think it was Jalen, Jalen.
Yeah.
She mentioned this, but on, uh, the thirty-first, which is also on Monday at nine forty-five AM, the Blue and Gold Cafe is going to be opening. And so, yep, if you can stop by and make a purchase and see the event, that'd be great. I know the chamber is going to be there, um, to do the ribbon cutting with them, so it's going to be quite the event. Not sure how there's going to be room for everybody. We might end up going the rest of the day serving.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure they're assuming for a big group of people, so that they're going to move the tables and have like coffee and stuff in there and the lotus at somewhere else.
Okay, that makes sense, yes. Um, and then finally, end of third quarter is Monday. So we have one quarter of the school year left after Monday. Conferences are next week. Then we have spring break the following week. Our board meetings, our work session and our board meeting next in, in April are a week off. They are the third and fifth Wednesdays of that month because we have spring break that week before. So the sixteenth and the thirtieth, so you might want to make sure your calendars are right with that. I also, when we were talking about Sue Holmes retiring and Will Moss retiring, those are the two. I just want to let you know that Thursday, June sixth, we will do a retirement, um, celebration with them, so we'll make sure you know that. And that's the same day as the senior, um, And that's the same day as the senior awards night. So if you wanted to make a day of it and come and do the retirement celebration at about three thirty, I think is when they'll do it and then join us for the senior awards night. Be a great day. And I, that is not a board meeting.
When's that, June sixth?
That's June sixth. And that's it for that.
Where is that, where is that retirement thing gonna be?
Middle school.
I was gonna ask you this, so I don't know if one of you know or actually probably Thomas. If there were, given the situation today that we're getting notices about. If there was something pending like tornado or something devastating coming. Are there sirens that go off here in town? Do we know that?
You know, I wondered that same thing today and I did not get to ask anybody.
No, in the Midwest, we have sirens.
Thurston County Emergency does have something you can subscribe to. Yeah. So typically when there's floods in our area.
Yeah, we get those.
We'll get those things, so I would assume that they would do that in a similar way.
No, I wonder that. Everybody who has an email is like Thurston County, they've been emailing me on all of the weather warnings. It's been really riveting.
And I guess now we're on to new business. And we have our first readings of policies. Right in time.
Yep, so these are, this is thirty-two oh seven and thirty-five twenty. These are the two policies that we went through last week. The first one is on students fines, students fees and I can't speak, students fees, fines and charges. The big difference in this one was a collection of funds from students when they have a, they owe a debt. And the fact that we can't hold their diploma, we can't hold their high school diploma. Yes, I'm sorry. We can't hold their transcript yet. So that's what that one is. And then the second one is thirty-two zero seven prohibit, prohibit, prohibition. I forget it. Thank you. The difference here is that there's no differentiation between the harassment, intimidation and bullying now. So there used to be different definitions of what each of those were and now they're not going to define them individually. It's there, if anything, anything meets harassment, intimidation or bullying, then it's all lumped into one. And then the clarification of the investigation and incident report submission. So that was first reading. Are there any questions?
This time. Okay, we don't need to take action on that tonight. And now we move on to B.
Yep.
Alright. RHS, FAA overnight and out-of-state travel.
That's then for this. I think Kaylin is willing to share just a few minutes or a little bit or Kaylin, alright.
Oh, would you like me to go up to the podium?
Right there and share a little bit about.
That she's worked so hard on for you all. Okay, I'm just gonna skip over the introduction then. So FFA would like you to give us permission to go camping at Cape Lookout State Park in Oregon for annual camp trip. We've been going away camping for over twenty years as a way to celebrate the year. And spend some relaxing time together as school rems. And we want to visit the Tillamook Cheese Factory to take an agricultural industry tour about how cheese and cheese curds are made. However, the Tillamook Cheese Factory is three hours away from Rochester, meaning that is a bit of a drive of going down and then back to Rochester. Or just anywhere in Washington and order camp. It just wouldn't work well, so by staying in Oregon, we would cut the driving time to the campsite and set up the campsite in the daylight. To stay at Cape Lookout, it would be about twenty-five dollars a night per campsite. We'll need three sites costing only one hundred and fifty dollars total for our members to stay two nights, which is actually cheaper than any campsites we are considering in Washington. We'll have a minimum of three chaperones at the event, which will be Mr. Jeski, Ms. Rose and Ms. Syke. We would like you to please consider and approve our request. Thank you, Kaylin and Julie.
It's a hundred and fifty dollars, that's, that's.
For campsite, yeah.
Is there other funding needed for?
It gets taken out of our USB account.
Well, board member, do we have a motion to approve this request?
Still move.
Moved, and do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, is there any discussion? Bring no discussion.
Have a great time.
Excited over there. And when is this trip going to take place?
It will be on the last day of school. I couldn't tell you when that is, so I'm gonna look my calendar.
I know my graduation date is. I know my last.
I wanna miss graduation, ladies.
Oh, yeah, today.
So we're gonna be there June ninth, tenth and eleventh, I'm assuming. And we're gonna head home on the eleventh.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, next, we have RHS fast pitch overnight travel.
Yes, and Joanie said.
Yeah, that's me. I don't have anything that fancy. I'm basically just here to answer any questions. I mean, we're, so we got invited to the RPI. It's an RPI tournament. RPI, RPI is Rankings Percentage Index. So basically the state seating committee will be there to be able to watch us play. So like last year, for instance, kind of what happened is our record, the seating committee looked at our record and we were like five hundred. But we also played Tom Water, Chahalas and Aberdeen three times. So we were the top five teams in the state. And so they weren't actually able to see us play and they just went off record. So we kind of got a bad seeding, even though talent-wise we should have been higher. So this just gives us a chance to play in front of that seating committee that can actually watch, physically watch us play. If it comes down to it and we make it to state and they can kind of help us out with seeding.
When you make it to state.
When we make it to state, yes, yes. When we make it to state. So I mean, it could take us, you know, from a ten seed to a five seed, just going over there to play those games against some tough, tough teams, so. We travel on the eighteenth and we would play two games on the nineteenth and walla walla and then we would come home. So we would stay that Friday night. Six hotel rooms, three coaches and fourteen girls. That's about all I got.
Six, how many, how many players?
Fourteen.
Three coaches and three chaperones or what?
Uh, three coaches, those are like chaperones slash, yeah, slash coaches.
So you're traveling and playing the same day when you get there?
Oh, no, we're traveling Friday. We'll go over, we'll have a team dinner Friday night and then we'll play Saturday. We play at eight thirty and two thirty. And then we'll come back after that game, yep. And we'll take vans. Just one night, yeah. And we're gonna fund, we're currently fundraising for it right now. It'll be about two grand roughly with with three vans. With bat bags, bat bags and stuff in five hours. Wasn't gonna squeeze everybody in a two van, so we're taking three vans, so gas, food, that's covered all their meals, gas for all three vans there and back and then hotel rooms.
And what date is this?
April eighteenth is travel day, April nineteenth is playing slash travel back.
And then the grind on the way back.
Yeah, hopefully coming back happy with two wins and a good showing. That's the plan.
And and so that would be like a, so it's a tournament basically for state seeding?
Yeah, so it's it's not technically a tournament, because it's not, I mean, we have set games already and set opponents, so it's not really like a bracketed tournament or anything. It's just, just so basically that seating committee that's gonna be seeding for state tournament can basically see the teams and help them out a little bit. So the seeding is a little more accurate, because sometimes like in the past, they just go off a record and RPI and that doesn't really do teams justice like us last year, having to play the top three teams in the state, giving us nine losses on our record. It didn't do us too too great, but so we're trying to, yeah, we got it. It's invite only, so it's kind of a cool thing for us to be invited by this state seating committee to that, so.
Okay, one more last question. Where's the state playoffs gonna be this year?
So districts will be in Centralia and we'll take top four out of there and then states at Richland, sixteen will go to Richland.
So there's a change, you might go back over there.
That's the plan, fingers crossed.
Wish you guys nothing but the best of luck. And and yeah, the more time you get to play, the better. Right. Well, do we have a motion to approve? I will second this one. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes.
Appreciate it.
Alright, next one, RHS track overnight travel.
So this is a track team with Mr. Wilson had nowhere to Pasco for a tournament. I believe Kaylin or Justin might be able to share a little bit more information on this, but it's on the eleventh of April. And I know he's thinking.
They're looking at taking two, two coaches, one male, one female coach. It would be a total of, right now it's probably four athletes going over. So it's qualifying, it's a very, very large invite. There's a few hundred athletes sent from across the state, so.
Where's it at?
Pasco. They've done this trip for the last four years, five years.
I don't know.
So. It'd be, it's also a one-nighter.
Pamela Johnson? Reading itinerary now. We have four? You said we have four qualified.
Yeah, hopefully they were supposed to qualify as of tonight. So, and and so there should be.
Some of the throwers are also.
Okay.
They, they got new PRs at the Rainier Icebreaker.
Yeah, a few of them that hadn't thrown as well in previous years, because we have certain people, so probably there's a real, but we have some really good people throwing, so they should be heading off to Pasco, or I know there's a thrower only invite that again as well, that they might be heading over to, which is insane.
Wonderful.
Friday of spring break.
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Well, they go over Friday of spring break, that meets on Saturday and then they drive back after the meet. Kind of, kind of, kind of similar itinerary with Joanie's doing. Different weeks. Different weeks. No, you're not getting a week out of school.
I'm not joking.
Alright, well, at this time, do we have a motion to approve this request for track and field? Suzie moves? We have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, and do we have any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Wish you guys the best of luck. I remember doing this a year ago when we still had kids that hadn't been to the meet yet, to the opportunity to go, but we had to do this ahead of time because we didn't have another board meeting. So, wonderful. Alright, next is okay, now we're on to strategic plan. This is our value stuff, okay. Right. What do we need to do with all this fine stuff? Do we need to read it out loud?
Nope, you can just vote to approve unless you would like me to go over it.
Did we change a word?
Yep, I got that in there. I believe it's corrected in there.
I remember there was a discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Well, board members, you wanna look this over really good, see if there's anything typos. I know that our community has worked hard on this in the district. They brought to us a few times. I think it's wonderful. I think it's a wonderful document.
I'll make a motion to move to approve the updated strategic plan.
Alright, grant motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Suzie seconds? Alright, any discussion?
Quiet here today, but this has been a lot of work going on. We went through it.
We went through a lot.
A lot of appreciation. Alright, so do we have a second on that already before we had our discussion? Yeah, then we had discussion. Alright, at this point in time, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. This will be a wonderful document. When will we look at this again? Twenty years?
It's good for five years and you're gonna see.
Five years. Well, I expect to see signs all over the schools. Absolutely. I don't know if you girls can see what we're looking at. Probably not, but this thing's really cool. I promise. Yeah, it's not on that screen either, but yeah, it's the core values, our front.
Oh, I saw those. Those are the things that we're gonna put up in the high school hall, right?
I think so, yeah. Excellent.
The counselors made me put it up in the council.
Alright, and next on our list, resolution?
Yep, this is a resolution for a reduction in force plan. This is hopefully something we won't need to use, but there is a chance that we might need to do a riff again this year of one or two people. Could be up to five. We are still waiting to see what happens with funds from the federal government and also what happens with state funding for the state, so we need to have some room if something comes and we need to you know, reduce some staff. We do have a few staff that we know we need to reduce or not replace when they, when somebody leaves because of just enrollment and then programmatic change, so. Helping us make sure we're gonna stay within our budget.
We need new roof now.
Still gonna have to do it, yep.
Alright, alright, so do I have a motion to approve? This budget resolution reducing a most educational plan.
So this is kind of a fluid document then, you're saying? Well, it would allow us to riff up to five people if we needed to. What's that?
Because we're required to give so much notice and we won't know the results of the budget.
Until.
No, it's too close to.
Yes, but the board has to approve by.
Yep, should be important. This is why we're here tonight, actually.
Exactly.
Be honest with you, but we need to make sure we have this in place for meeting contracts and end those discussions.
I'll move that we pass resolution twenty-four second.
And second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on our list tonight is surplus items.
This is just an ongoing list of items that we are not using anymore that need to be surplus. Thanks to Ed and Andrea for a lot of work here and then some of both the people in our building who are managing the surplus there as well.
See a VCR in there.
Real VCR?
The one on the back counter, I haven't surplus yet. Move to approve surplus.
Alright, we have, in motion, do we have a second? Washer dryer combo. Alright, so we have a first and a second. And any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Okay, and next, RPS donation anonymous.
Yes, this is an anonymous donation that's been made of two brand-new stackable washers and dryers to the primary school.
That must be our washer and dryer thing that made it to surplus.
Actually, I'm not sure where that washer and dryer is. Okay, there it is. Yes, it is.
Well, I just, I saw that and I'm like, oh, I wonder if that, yes, wonderful. Awesome, anonymous. Alright, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved? I will second that one. Any discussion?
It'd be just a one liner on what are they primarily useful?
What are they primarily used for? Kids clothes, it's.
Special education.
I, I believe that child nutrition uses it occasionally for, you know, cleaning towels and, but, but kids.
And we were able to get that donation. Alright, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Alright, next, we have building condition assessments.
Ed, do you wanna speak to this one?
Yeah, my game, you guys have the, they have the list in front of them, I take it?
Yep.
Yep. Um, you can see there's, in, the buildings are rated in a percentage. The ones that normally catch our attention, of course, there's one in it that's thirty percent, that's on the water system. Um, it's tagged in there cause it supplies two of our buildings, three of our buildings, but uh, one of them that's in the APP. Um, the um, the ones that are in the sixty percentile, there's, the middle school has some siding that's tagged in there, we've got work orders on that for what we can fix in-house, if we have to bring somebody outside, the contractor in, we will. Most, all the things that are tagged on the ICOS report APP are, um, work orders have already been submitted for repair, replacement. There's some things like they, it's suggested on the windows for the middle school are due to be replaced. You know, we're holding on to that for a bit, we're not going in and replacing them all right now, to come out how we do. Um, the most urgent thing at the middle school is probably the floors and the bathrooms, um, that's uh, tagged in there. The linoleum, th- those floors have been due to be repaired for several years. Elementary school or primary school, um, the roof is the big issue there. Where it's recommended new roof within the next five years, I think that was recommended two years ago. But um, it's, it's still holding up, we don't have leaks or anything like that, but we're at that point where we're sealing nails that are poking through tiles, cause tiles are getting wore on the tree tab, the roof itself. Ridge caps, so we're getting close to the end of life.
And we just did the uh, GMS about two.
Yes, that's a, that's a membrane roof, yeah.
That was, it seemed like that took like the whole school year, it seemed like.
Yeah.
It could fight a while.
Yeah, they kept finding things, unfortunately, once you start filling things back, you know, it was kinda like an engine.
Yeah. Alright, so we need to make any sort of motion on this, or just acknowledging the, the assessment's been done?
No, you need to approve this one.
We do approve this, alright, we have a motion to approve our building condition assessments.
So moved.
So moved. You have a second? We have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passive. Alright, next, we move on to graduation dates and attendance.
Yep, so this is for information and then to gather your plans, if you know them already, for graduation. Um, graduation twenty twenty-five, Kaylin over there is gonna be walking across the stage, if all goes well, right?
Yes.
Um, we have heart graduation, June sixth at six PM, that's right out back um, up here, and then we have RHS graduation at Saint Martin's on June eighth at two PM. What would the board like to do is, let's start with the graduation and at Saint Martin's is I think last year we had everybody attending, is that everybody available to attend this year, or what are you thinking?
Yes.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not, I'm no one at this point. Alright, I will check with you later.
I've gotta fly to DC on that day.
Okay.
On Friday or I might check or.
Us, and may be able to make the heart one, which is great, so I could do that one last year, but.
Okay.
I love that.
I can't believe this. You're infirmant.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the coolest part about.
I know who's really not gonna be there. Alright, and heart graduation on the sixth? So I heard Michael.
Yeah, I could do that one, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. You were, yes, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Alright.
Do we know how many kids are gonna be graduating this year from hearts?
Uh, it will be a little bit smaller, I, I believe. It's, it's, uh, I think we may have, so we have a, we have a couple, we've, we've actually already had one or two graduate. Um, and so we're trying to get both of them back to actually come walk. Um, cause otherwise we might be four to six walking, but we're trying to get, trying to get a couple to come back for the actual ceremony.
So, cool, that's, that's wonderful.
You got me down? Yeah, no, for which one, for, oh, for I do for her, yes.
Yeah.
Warms my heart every time I hear we have people that are coming back for the re-engagement, so I really appreciate that part of Jill's. Especially when she tells us that, it's like, cool, kids are coming back, they're realizing the world isn't what they thought it was, maybe I need a little more.
That's right, take advantage of the education.
Awesome, so we don't need to do anything on that at this time?
No, we're good, thank you.
Alright, next, we are on to number seven, our public comments for items that were not on our agenda this evening. Nope, we have no one in the hallway?
No.
Anyone online?
No. Well, we have someone online, but she doesn't wanna speak to anything.
Someone wants to speak, alright, I always wanna make sure there's an ample opportunity for everyone to speak to the board, for items that are or aren't on our agendas. And with that, meeting is over. Thank you, everyone, for coming.